All right, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this Monday, May 2nd, public meeting of the Board of Garrett County Commissioners. I want to welcome everyone in here. We have a full house today. If everyone would please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance, and then Pastor Rex Rhodes will lead us in the invocation.
To the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this beautiful day that you have blessed us with. And Lord, as we have come into this meeting of the county commissioners, we ask that you continue to bless each of them with health and strength, that you would help them to make the best decisions, and that you would lead and guide them. And Lord, for each one who is at this meeting today, for whatever their purpose, we ask that the things that we say, the things that would be done, would be pleasing unto you. But most of all, we seek your wisdom in all the things that we do, and forgive us when we fail you. All this I ask, in your son's name. Amen.
Please be seated. Mr. Knowles, any additions, deletions, corrections of public meeting agenda?
No, sir, there are none.
Hearing none, we have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion, a second agenda approved by mutual consent. Everybody got a copy of the minutes in advance of the meeting? Are there any additions, corrections, concerns to minutes? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Meeting, or minutes approved by mutual consent. We have several proclamations on the docket to start today. And the first one we will do is the National Day of Prayer. And I'll read this, and then we have some of the clergy from our county in the audience. We'll ask you to come up, and we'll get a picture taken, and I'll present this to you guys. And appreciate you guys coming out. So this proclamation reads, "National Day of Prayer: Called to Praise and Prayer, May 5th, 2022. Exalt the Lord who has established us based on Colossians 2:6 through 7. Whereas we are richly blessed to have by law a national day of prayer in our country each year, and whereas leaders of our nation have relied upon the power of prayer throughout American history, and whereas throughout our nation's history, leaders have urged citizens of faith to pray for our land and those who defend our freedoms at home and abroad. For many prayers an important part of their daily lives, and today we join the people across our country in uniting in a national day of prayer. Now therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim May 5th, 2022, as a day of prayer in Garrett County, and do commend this observation to all of our citizens. In witness whereof, we, the Board of Garrett County Commissioners, set our hands and cause the seal of Garrett County, Maryland, to be affixed this second day of May in the year of our Lord, 2022, signed by Commissioners Heinball, Tishnall, and myself." And if I would ask you guys to come forward, please.
No, it's over here.
He's taking a picture.
Okay, you want to take a picture?
I can't. Anyone else have one?
Oh, please.
Okay. You all got a smile for it.
At least smile.
Yeah.
It clicks a lot of times. Dare we? It's a noisy one.
Thank you, Diane.
I'll be first to camera. Thursday? We gonna see you two?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, the second proclamation is for Foster Care Month, and we have several members of Social Services here, so we'll do the same thing for this. Garrett County Foster Care Month Proclamation, May of 2022, whereas by proclamation of the President of the United States of America, may have been declared a National Foster Care Month. As such, we reflect on the role that foster parents, kinship parents, adoptive parents, and other child advocates play in meeting the needs of many youth in care in Garrett County, and whereas there are approximately 49 children currently in foster care in Garrett County, and whereas all young people in foster care need a meaningful connection to caring adult who becomes a supportive, accepting, and lasting presence in their lives, and whereas the Garrett County Department of Social Services is committed to recruiting and retaining dedicated individuals who are willing to open their hearts and their homes to foster love in our community. Now therefore, we, the Board of Garrett County Commissioners, recognize the importance and significance of Garrett County foster parents and their impact on our local children, and proclaim May 2022 as Garrett County Foster Care Month in Garrett County, and urge our citizens to commend this observance, signed by Commissioners Heinball, Tishnall, and myself. And if the Social Services folks would like to come forward, hopefully you have your speech prepared.
Hey, Dr. O'Malley, talker for this.
Yeah.
Professional one.
Professional.
Yeah, right. I guess I'm a professional one.
Are y'all ready?
Yeah.
I'm doing a combination video.
Ah, he is professional.
Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you guys so much.
I think you guys want to say?
No, we just appreciate all of your support. We appreciate you recognizing, you know, kind of the place that, how vulnerable it is to be a foster parent and a kid in care, and just the support that you provide to all of those pieces to make this work. So, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks very much. Thank you.
All right, the next proclamation is for Children's Mental Health Awareness Week, May 2nd through May 6th, 2022. Whereas good mental health is a key component in a child's healthy development, Children's Mental Health Week provides the opportunity to focus on this important matter while celebrating the accomplishments of children and families affected by mental health concerns. And whereas according to the United States Department of Health and Human Services, one in five children is diagnosed with a mental health condition. And whereas research has shown early identification and appropriate treatment of mental disorders among children and adolescents provide them better opportunities to lead full and productive lives, and whereas children and youth with mental health challenges and their families benefit from access to timely services and supports that are family-driven, youth-guided, and culturally appropriate, they also benefit from the integration of behavioral health and primary care, education, and child welfare. And whereas it is important that children and adolescents, along with their families and communities, learn about warning signs of mental health disorder, and where to obtain necessary assistance and treatment, and whereas obtaining a full and accurate diagnosis of a child requires gathering information from diverse sources, including the family, school, and others involved with the child, and now therefore, we, the Board of Garrett County Commissioners, hereby recognize May 2nd through May 6th, 2022, as Children's Mental Health Awareness Week in Garrett County, and call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens proclaimed on this second day of May, 2022, signed by Commissioners Tishnall, Heinball, and myself. And I believe, Bob, are you and Dr. Schwalm, Dr. Schwalm going to accept the proclamation?
The whole group.
The whole group? Every? Shelley?
How you doing?
What?
I'm good.
That's the person who runs around saying, "There's not enough resources."
He partied in "Not Enough Resources."
Yeah, exactly.
Anyone wearing green talking to me?
Yeah, it looks better.
I forgot.
Yeah.
We call this the Green Campaign. That's why we're wearing green. We, the Surgeon General last year put out a special warning about child mental health, and it's gotten a whole lot worse since COVID. And one of the things he recommended is that there's like eight pillars to improving child mental health. One of those pillars is the government, healthcare, education, there's a whole list of them. But, so, we appreciate the chance for you letting us make this public, and that's all.
Thank you, guys, very much. I think you all are going to get the next one, too, so don't go too far. The next proclamation is Mental Health Awareness Month, May 2022. Whereas mental health is a part of overall health and sustains an individual's thoughts, thought processes, relationships, productivity, and ability to adapt to change, whereas one in 25 adults live with mental illness such as major depression, bipolar disorder, or schizophrenia, and whereas roughly one half of chronic mental illness begin by the mid-teens and three-fourths by the mid-20s, and whereas early identification and treatment can make a difference in successful management of mental illness and recovery. Whereas it is important to maintain mental health and recognize the symptoms of mental illness and seek help when needed. Whereas every citizen and community can help end the silence and stigma surrounding mental illness through public education and civic activities, Maryland remains engaged in a promise to address the challenges facing people with mental illness. And whereas Mental Health Awareness Month is an opportunity to increase public understanding of the importance of mental health to promote the identification and treatment of mental illness, now therefore, we, the Garrett County Board of Commissioners, do hereby recognize May 2022 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Garrett County, and call this observance to the attention of all our citizens proclaimed on this second day of May, 2022, signed by Commissioners Heinball, Tishnall, and myself. This one is in green, so if you're wearing green, you're welcome to come back up and accept this proclamation.
You shouldn't say in the same line, I think.
We'll change.
It changes a little bit.
Police line.
You are in the middle.
You're in the middle.
Fred's going to give the speech, but particularly, we're particularly happy with Commissioner Heinball served on the Mental Health Advisory Commission, or Committee, and we really appreciate that.
Thank you.
We need that phone yet, too, because sometimes the lighting's better on it than it is on the big camera.
Fred giving the speech?
You want?
You give him the speech?
I don't have it here. Public speaking is one of my biggest weaknesses and fears. So, I don't know, just, we have a great community with support for not just behavioral health issues, but the, not treatment, but just the support, support services, whether they're in-home or in the community. We have a Wellness and Recovery Center that's just down on Alder Street. If you have a chance, stop in. I think they're open Monday through Friday from about 11 until 4, 5 o'clock in the evening. Also, if you have, if you're interested in resources, we do have a resource guide that's on MyGarrettCounty, which is a wonderful website that Shelley and John developed, as well as GoGarrettCounty, that has some really nice videos on there. I think you uploaded my video.
Ladder Guide.
Ladder Guide that's on there. So if you're interested in services, let people know about it. It's easy access. You can use it on the phone, and the pages will conform to any type of smartphone. And so it's, it gives, I think it has Geo, has the addresses available on there as well. Yeah, so it's wonderful. Providers are growing in the community, which is great. We have some medication-assisted treatment providers, which can be controversial, but they're beneficial to individuals who are seeking, you know, different types of recovery. And we have some growing psychiatric services, especially for kids. And just to let everyone know, we're going to be starting, having a mobile crisis response team that's going to be established in Garrett County, probably starting in fiscal year '23, which will be July 1. And that will involve mobile crisis as well as some in-home support services. And the hope is to divert kids and adults as well, but start with kids from the emergency room, and then also give the families some support when the kids are released or not even have to go to the hospital. So it's, you know, the support and the treatment services are growing in Garrett County, which is fantastic.
I know just in the time that I've been involved, there's been a big improvement in the availability of services here in the county. So, plus that was a good job, by the way.
Yeah, well done.
Well done. Thank you. Well, you know, if you need me to speak on your behalf.
Thank you all very much. Now that we're all smiled out.
I feel like you are going to let it happen.
Yeah, yeah.
Budget complete.
Yeah, 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 exactly.
Thank you, 13 years that could help us out.
Next up, we have the State of Maryland Consolidated Transportation 2023 Plan, the Garrett County Priority List, and Sierra, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, well, thanks. So, move this out of the way. So each year, MDOT asks the county which projects are of importance to us, and on our roadways, and the ones that are maintained by state highway. And so we put together a list coordinating with the different organizations and the transit, 10 items. The first one on our list is US-219 Extension North to Pennsylvania. So if that's in the planning stages, so we're asking for preliminary design and right-of-way acquisition to keep that project moving. The second project on the list is the Oakland Bypass Project, and so we're asking to, for preliminary engineering and moving that project forward. Project number three is Maryland 135 between Lachlan Heights to Oakland, doing a road diet. So you're minimizing the pavement and reallocating the roadway to make it the speeds look slower, and also providing alternate, like paths for pedestrians and bicyclists to connect the parks and neighborhoods throughout that area. The fourth one on the list is revive, looking at pedestrian crossings on 219 around the lake between like Trader's Landing and Unos. It's a little narrow through there, trying to make it safer for people crossing the way and trying to use non-motorized access. Then we're looking, then our fifth project is that section of 219, just a little north of that, between Massa Road and to Trader's Landing, and also trying to improve the pedestrian access through there, possibly through trails. And number six is some truck, traffic improvement on Sand Flat Road, mainly intersection improvements at 135 and at 219, some turning lanes to make that a little safer through there. Number seven is sidewalk extension from the western, or the eastern limits of the town of Greensville, all the way to Trader's Landing, or Trader's Crossing, not Trader's Crossing, Little Crossings, through the state park and to the Artisan Village there. Then we have number eight, which is pedestrian and pedestrian retrofits for sidewalks through Third Street and on Oak Street in Oakland for aesthetic improvements and also for accessibility. And then nine is supporting Garrett Transit Services operational and capital budgets for that, for the coming fiscal year. And lastly, we're asking for state highway to evaluate the intersection of 495 and Glendale Road, to see if they can make some geometric improvements to make that a little safer, or have some warning lights for when it is foggy. So, that's our 10 requests, and we're hoping that MDOT, there should be plenty of funding this year. Hopefully, we'll see some movement on these projects. And so we'll sign this letter and send it to the Secretary of Transportation. You have any questions?
Questions? All right, if there are no questions, do I have a motion to approve the priority list for Garrett County?
So moved.
We have a motion, a second.
Second.
Motion, a second. Question or motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks.
No problem.
When's the annual visit?
That's usually in October, so like first week in October.
Is that list available?
Yeah, we'll be posting this once we send it to MDOT. I'll put it on the county's planning webpage, as well as MDOT posts all the priority letters from Garrett County since like 2009, so, yeah.
And I will say, Sierra did a great job. She reached out to all the communities, all the towns, and made sure that they had an opportunity to submit their request, and so it should be reflective of the county. So, thank you.
Yeah. Hopefully we can get some projects off there, and we can add some more next year, so.
Don't run off.
Nope.
All right, so next, next item on the agenda, we are going to close the public meeting and open a public hearing for the Garrett County Agricultural Land Preservation District applications. Before I turn it back over to Sierra to manage that public hearing, I need a motion to close the public meeting and open a public hearing.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion, so we are now in a public hearing in regard to the Garrett County Agricultural Land Preservation District applications. And Sierra, it's all yours.
All right, so, so we're looking at seven agricultural districts to be approved. They have been approved by the Agricultural Land Preservation Board and the Planning Commission. And now we're trying, we're going to have the commissioners approve those if there's no comments. These people are going to be signing an agricultural district, which preserves the land and prevents it from being subdivided for the next three years, and allows the applicants to apply for permanent easement from either Rural Legacy or the Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation, to sell the development rights to permanently protect the land from development. The first one on our list is Bravo Ford Land Company, which is located, this one would be a rural legacy property because it's in the Bear Creek watershed. It's 224 acres, and it's along Fish Hatchery Road and Garrett Highway. And then the next six applications will be applying for agricultural land preservation foundation applications for this year, along with the other, I believe it's eight applications on our list. That program is really well-funded this year, so we're hoping to bring more easements to the county. The first one is for Timothy Sisler, which is located on Friendsville Road at the Pennsylvania border, and it's a 260-acre farm. The next one is Richard Sisler, which is also in Friendsville, south on Glade Road and Friendsville Road, and it's a 110-acre farm. The next one is Justin Gregory. It's a 50-acre farm located at Sanders Lane in Oakland. The following one is a farm that is 109 acres for Jeffrey Gregory. It's on Maffet Lane and in Oakland. And then we have one located on Green Lantern Road, consisting of 200 acres for Jason Smith. And lastly, there is a 200, no, 129-acre farm located on Sam Crow Road for Kenneth Green to be approved for an agricultural district.
All right, since this is a public hearing, are there any questions from the public or comments in relation to the seven applications for the Garrett County Agricultural Land Preservation? Hearing none. Any questions from the commission? Hearing none. I need a motion to close the public hearing and reopen the public meeting.
So moved.
All right, we are back in the public meeting, and following that, I will need a motion to accept the district applications. We'll take them all as one slate. So do I have a motion to accept the seven applications for the Garrett County Agricultural Land Preservation?
Make a motion to accept all, so moved.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion, a second. Question or motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, that actually is the last action item on the agenda. We now come to a time for public comment from, on any topic from our guests. Does anybody have any comments they would like to make?
Do you take questions?
Sure.
On the Oakland Bypass, the Oakland County, say thumbs up on that?
I believe so. Yes, yes.
Definitely.
Yep. Any other questions? Okay, a couple of announcements. The next meeting of the Board of Garrett County Commissioners will be Tuesday, May the 17th. That will be our budget hearing as well, so the Constant Yield Public Hearing will be at 4:30. The budget presentation will begin at 4:45. As soon as we adjourn this meeting, which will be in just a minute, we will hear budget presentations tonight from the Garrett County Health Department, the State's Attorney's Office, Community Action Committee, and Ruth and Lo Library. And the only other announcement that I have is I would like to introduce Garrett County's new business development specialist, Connor Norman. Connor comes to us, to the Economic Development Department, to assist with existing businesses, the towns that he's on, between the Economic Development Department, as well as the municipalities, and going to do some social media campaigns, et cetera. So we're excited to have Connor on board and welcome him. And anything you'd like to say, Connor?
Well, on the spot, I'm happy to be on board. Again, really thrilled to be taking on some economic initiatives in the community. Looking forward to working with you all, and of course, the businesses around town. So I'll be around in your faces a lot, I'm sure.
All right, thank you. If there are no other business from the commission, I'll take a motion to adjourn the public meeting.
So moved.
All right, meeting's adjourned. In just a second, we will begin our budget presentation, starting with the Health Department.
Hey, Bob.
Yes, sir.
I have to leave to go to another meeting, but I want you to know.
How you doing? Hey, did you get those welders to that? That was all that you had left out there, right?
So did they try to cut?
Everything you got, everything we were. Perfect.
Did they try to?
Yeah.
It's okay to do that.
For next year? One-third of three. She's the person you're going to ask. Don't ask me. But we're glad to be here. Just, let me see if I can get this. See what I have to do. Do I have to point it at something?
There you go.
There we go. So that's just the mission and vision of the Garrett County Health Department, promote, protect, and improve the health of citizens and visitors of Garrett County, and our vision.
We've lost a lot of our, in our fee-for-service programs. We have providers that would pay for themselves and we have positions that are, that are open. And we also, you know, we had a huge turnover through retirements in our billing department. And so we're reorganizing the billing department. Hopefully that'll work out so that we'll be able to, you know, do an even better job in that.
I appreciate all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Next up is the State's Attorney's Office. Ms. Welch.
Good afternoon. Our presentation is not nearly as fancy. For many years, the State's Attorney's Office has had, of course, because we are heavily personnel-heavy for our office, that in operating, we've basically operated between $21,000, $22,000 per year in operating expenses and are seeking just a little bit more this year, only an additional $1,500 over prior years for small equipment. And that's because we're going to need to outfit what I hope will be an approved new position within our office. As you know, just with the advent of technology in and of itself, very many of the cases that we handle have a lot of video evidence and similar things, whether it's from a business or a private residence or otherwise. And now we're moving into the in-car cameras and the body cameras that the police officers have. We currently have in Garrett County any number of, not all Maryland State Police Officers, but, but most of them have an in-car camera on their dashboard. We have Oakland City that has both a body camera and a dashboard camera that we've had to use. And as I said, many of the businesses and personal residences have those. And now it's pretty much expected that that kind of evidence exists in most cases. Our office operates on seven and a half people. We have two and a half attorneys, myself, who operates both the office and full-time Circuit Court caseload. I have a District Court prosecutor and then a part-time Assistant State's Attorney who handles a few cases in the circuit, a few cases in the district, does some of our, what I call, heavy lifting when we have a very involved, like a financial crime that takes a lot of hours of sitting down and looking at records, those kinds of things. And he's also pretty much sometimes my go-to for legal research matters. So that's the attorney coverage in the office in what we call the District Court Division. There's also the District Court Office Manager who handles all of the day-to-day functions of getting all the right people and all the right case files and all the documents in the right place, as well as a certified police officer who acts as the investigator, who puts all the cases together. And that person's tasked with talking to the witnesses, getting the evidence together and assisting the attorney with all of our discovery and production requirements to defense attorneys. Likewise, in the Circuit Court Division, we have an office coordinator who coordinates both the Circuit Court and the overall functions of the office. I have a senior investigator who is tasked with putting together the Circuit Court cases, gathering the evidence, interviewing the witnesses and all of that. He also does special investigations, such as anytime someone wants to charge a law enforcement officer or certain other professionals within the course of their employment. He investigates those. He sits on a number of committees for me, such as the Sex Offender Management Team. And then I periodically task him with doing things like following up with reported truancy cases, which we've had quite a few of in the past couple of years. So that position is very busy. And then we have a victim-witness coordinator because, of course, victims' rights were established any number of years ago. And there are a lot of responsibilities in being in contact with victims of crimes. And we also task that person with working with witnesses in our serious, serious cases, as well as doing some other development. So now with the advent of having to watch all of this video, it's pretty much stretching. At this point, the investigators do try to do as much of that as possible, but it's becoming increasingly burdensome. And we're fearful that it takes away from those opportunities to go out and literally talk to the witnesses and the victims in the case and make sure we have everything put together as we wish. We know that the sheriff's office is asking for a pilot of eight body cameras to start with. So we just imagine a scenario where you have, you know, two deputies who have come up and have body cameras, maybe the Oakland City Officer is responding who has a dash camera and a body camera, and maybe there's a state trooper who has a car camera, and maybe the business or the residents where the event happened have cameras. And all of those different angles have to be, have to be viewed. But they don't only have to be viewed, they have to also be incorporated into the cases. And by that, I mean, you know, each one of those would have to, somebody would have to take the time to mark up each of those videos for that portion of the video that has any kind of evidentiary value, any part of that that is mitigating or exculpatory for a defendant, we have to produce to a defendant. And then we have to also, for purposes of producing it to defense attorneys, we would be certain things, such as when a victim or witness is being interviewed and they're giving their dates of birth and social security numbers, that has to somehow be redacted out of certain copies and versions. If there's, if there are children or innocent people in the background, those have to be blurred or removed in some fashion. So this is going to be a position that I'm asking, seeking at this time, is for an evidence technician. And that's what that person would do, is going to essentially work with the electronic evidence that we are finding, as I said, more and more in cases and more and more expected in cases. We had a defendant not too long ago that demanded a jury trial, was found guilty of two counts of an assault, and I overheard him telling his attorney the reason he wanted, wanted this trial was because there was no camera in the back of that evidence to prove that he hit those two EMTs. So as I say, it's expected, very many places for there to be these kinds of evidence. So we feel duty-bound to go out and find it if it's there. And then obviously, we have to produce it in the appropriate format. Told by Mr. Weeks that the proposed salary range and expected fringe benefits for that position would be about $78,600 overall. And as I said, with our operating, we're just asking for an additional $1,500 to make sure that we can outfit that person's work area appropriately for doing this task. So, subject to any questions, I just submit that request.
Larry? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Next up's Garrett County Community Action. Dwayne?
Yep, we have.
Yep.
What do I do here?
You could jump there first. There you go.
Oh, okay. Yeah, okay. Okay. I got it figured out.
All right.
Thank you. Let me just first say, I do want to say kind of a thank you to Scott and Kevin. They're easy to work with. And when you're dealing with budgets, it's always kind of a headache, but those two individuals have really been helpful. So thank you for that. This is really the financial assistance request for Garrett County Community Action for FY '23. And the bottom line on all this is that we're asking for, as compared to FY '22, $64,000 plus over what we asked for last year. But I do want to highlight that, that those numbers include a $145,000 allocation that was made during the year and are included here. So it wasn't the approved budget that we started out with. So the increase compared to what was actually approved at the beginning of the year is bigger than what this number reflects. But there are, in terms of the total, total amount of money that we're asking for, is And as I said, that's $64,755 above where we were in the actual expenditure from FY The increase, the biggest increase, is I've asked for double the money that we had approved for last year for the Pathway to Homeownership program. It's a program that reflects, I think, some of the county priorities and certainly community actions priorities on trying to develop some workforce housing. It is also based on, you know, our approved pipeline of people who have expressed interest and have applied for the program. It will, it will assist at least 30 homebuyers in FY '23. Meals on Wheels, which is, and here where it's a little misleading, I show a $40,000 decrease, but that includes that $145,000. So it's an actual increase from the approved budget line of $104,000. And the Meals on Wheels, what, when we started with COVID, of course, we had a lot of seniors who ended up in their home. And we went up to about 250 individual, or households that we were serving. And that's up from about 170 in pre-COVID. Currently, we're at about 200. That's where it's holding pretty steady now, between 190 and 200. And the increase would fund everyone who is on that, what we call the Priority A List, the first priority list. It does not include waiting list people in the other two, lower priorities. People who get Meals on Wheels go through an assessment. Some of Bob's staff helps with that. And they are given priorities based on their need. So what this increase would do in terms of Meals on Wheels is serve everyone who's in that Priority A List at this point. I am also asking for a $30,000 increase focused on doing an assessment of our business operations in our financial office. We've, we've struggled getting audits out in time, getting reports out in time. And, you know, we've grown, but I don't want to be in a position where we just have to add staff every time we grow. I think we can automate. I think we can do a different, have a different way of doing some of our business operations. And I need some help in trying to figure out how to do that. So, so that's, that's kind of the, the bottom line in terms of the numbers. I thought what I would do is just give you some highlights in terms of what happened in '21. Chautauqua Park West, 77 units. It's scheduled to be completed, fully completed this month. But during '21, that was a major, major effort. Our response to COVID was also, I guess, I guess I would say, a highlight. We, we did, you know, we stayed open. We, our central workers were out there every day. One of the programs that we worked very hard on was the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. There are about 140 persons, households, who received 12 months of their rent during COVID as a result of that. And the, well, maybe, there we go. The other two highlights that I would just raise is that we continue to be very engaged with this whole-family, two-generation approach. We're working with a number of national groups and State of Maryland in implementing it this year for the first time, I think. And we were partially instrumental in making this happen. The Governor and the Department of Human Services included a line item for the two-generation work across Maryland. And, you know, Garrett County and Western Maryland were leaders in doing that. And we are also redoing our strategic plan. We're updating our strategic plan this year. So that's some of the highlights. I put this chart in because I just thought it reflected a lot of what we're doing around that whole-family work. This chart shows that where families that we work with have adopted, there's an assessment and then we, and we ask families to develop work, action plans around that, that self-assessment that they do. And this shows where the goal area of our, in each of these dimensions that they have picked. So for instance, in this graph, you will see that the largest number of goals, families, the largest number of families had goals in financial management. The, the line reflects the number of goals that were achieved, the percentage of goals that were achieved. But this is something that we do with households and families coming through any one of our doors. And, you know, there are a number of other kinds of data points that are really interesting, but this is just one that shows where families' interests are and where their, where their focus is in terms of achieving goals. Just to highlight just the issues that we're facing in, in this coming year. Wage compression, minimum wage and competition for, for finding employees has generally acted to drive up the cost of our lower, our entry-level positions. And that is creating a wage compression across our entire scale. You know, if we would keep our current spacing in terms of all our positions, it would be about a $3.5 million ticket item. So it's, it's an issue that we're trying to figure out how to respond to. We're, we're really experiencing some difficulty just in terms of housing supply. And I can, you know, for example, in '21, we know that we had a dozen households who lost their Section 8 or their rental assistance voucher because they simply couldn't find a unit that was qualified. Today, out of the 42 vouchers that we've issued, only two have found a voucher as of this past month. So that's just indicative of a housing supply issue. I had one case where we had a household who, who was living in a development where we had rent assistance. And because her income went up, she became ineligible for the rent assistance. And she came in homeless because she couldn't find a place. And she had an adequate income, as a matter of fact, a fairly decent income. So supply and their terms of housing is, is, I think, an issue that we're, we're having difficulty with. And as, you know, I've had a lot of conversation with Bob on the recovery house. One of the most difficult homeless situations that we have is individuals who have for maybe a dual diagnosis, mental health and addictions, who, who have burned bridges or have been banned in our traditional shelters, which are the motels. And, and there's just simply very little, few options for them at this point. And then finally, what I call the cliff effect, I mentioned the lady that was homeless and had an income. Because her, her income went up, she was no longer eligible for our housing assistance. But we are finding that programs like Head Start, as if you go to minimum wage, for example, that pushes you just above 100% of poverty, which is the income level that qualifies you for Head Start. So if your income is going up or if you have a minimum wage, a full-time minimum wage position, you would no longer be eligible for Head Start. So that cliff effect is another issue that we have, that we're dealing with. I did this just to give you a profile. It's simply a quick profile, profile of community action. 189 employees at the end of 2021. We had a little over 6,000 individuals that came through our doors in one fashion or the other, 3,400 households that came through our doors in one way or the other. I threw this in because I actually, now that Jim isn't here, this was Jim's chart, pie chart, terms of taxes that we, that we pay into the county system. Our real estate taxes were a little over $314,000. That's actual taxes paid by our, by our housing developments and housing units. And then the piggyback on the income tax, $146,000. So that shows some contribution back into the, the economy. And the pie chart on the right is our revenue, our revenue chart. We were a little over $24 million last year. This is a, this is a, what we consolidated report. So it shows all our operations, not just the core community action, but our subsidiary corporations as well. But it was a little over 24 million. And you can see how the breakout is. I would say that the federal forces this year were unusually high because of COVID and CARES. We received a lot of federal money that we probably will not be seeing again. But, so the, the federal share, which was, what is that? That's about 58%, I guess, of the total, total amount. And typically, that would be around 50, right around 50%. So that just gives you a quick, a quick overview of where we are. I'm not going to read mission, values and vision. It's much longer than Bob's. But we just recently adopted this or revised it. So are there questions? Any questions?
Larry?
No, I don't have any.
All right. Thanks, Dwayne. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne. And last for today, and certainly not least, the Ruth and Lo Library. Thomas?
All right, let's see here. Maybe. Cameron?
I bet.
One of these buttons has to do it, right?
Nope, they're not there yet. Hold on.
Oh, sorry.
There you go.
There we go. All right, we're in business. Thank you. Yes, thank you very much for having me out here today. It's good to see you all today. And I really appreciate members of our board coming out and representing. I appreciate that a lot. So I'm here to give you a bit of a rundown as to what we've been up to at the library lately. And we've had some successes lately to highlight, and I was going to start off a little bit with that. Maybe? Ah, there we go. Many of our accomplishments, I wanted to emphasize, have come through partnerships. Libraries connect people in groups. And we care about rebuilding the kind of real-world connections that COVID damaged these last couple of years. We've been trying to leverage the community's resources and dedicated people so that everybody benefits. This helps make community groups strong. And I firmly believe strongly in making sure that the community groups that serve so many people remain strong. So one of our first projects is with the schools. We have started a pilot project with Northern, Northern High School, Northern Middle School there on the list. This is a hold screen that helps the, their librarians expand access to materials. It's gone very well so far, and we're looking to expand that pilot program to Southern. So we've also, of course, partnered with, oops, partnered with the Health Department. We really appreciate the opportunity to help get the masks and COVID tests out into the community. There was a huge demand for that. It's tapered off recently, but there's still a lot of demand for masks. And, you know, who knows what the future will bring, so. And then we've partnered up with Maryland Legal Aid to give free legal advice to the folks who have trouble accessing it. Again, in the, in our world, legal advice is kind of a privilege for wealthy in a lot of cases. And we're happy to be able to help connect people to that, that free resource. We've also partnered with Social Services. They started out a recent partnership with us where they have somebody come out, a social worker, to help patrons with whatever applications that they need help with. And there's a lot of great resources out there that we're happy to get the word out on. We've also partnered up with the Detention Center and nursing homes, providing some of our old materials to help folks who need reading material for one reason or another. So, let's see. And we partnered up with the Historical Society and the Sensals. We've fully digitized the Glade Star. And we have virtually all the Republican, there's still some gaps, but they are all available digitally. And we did it for pretty minimal cost, quite honestly. Town of Friendsville, of course, we've been partnering with them. We recently doubled the size of that library. And that clears the way for a new building with the, with the support of our legislators. That's a goal that we are really proud to have achieved. So we're respectfully requesting an increase in funding though this year, you know, due to a number of factors, many of which you're already familiar with and have already heard about. But pay rates is one of our first ones. I recently had to hire a branch manager. This is a position that requires a BA or BS degree and continuing education. It's a supervisory position, requires a lot of, you know, independent judgment. I was able to offer him $39,000. That didn't attract many people. And so that was a real tough thing to, to, to fill. We just, we just hired a PR person. The salary we were able to give them was $15.30 an hour. That in a couple of years will be barely over minimum wage. And this is something that requires a good deal of specialized skills. And so obviously, we've been just trying to stay ahead of minimum wage increases, which you all know are sneaking up. And the salary compression that Dwayne just mentioned is an issue too. But we've been doing a good job, I think, staying ahead of those increases, but that's come at the expense of the professional skilled positions. And so we need to try to make that up as best we can. And we've done well in picking up savings in years past by folding positions in with one another via attrition. But this only works for so long. And we're about at the limit of what we can do with that. Obviously, inflation's an issue. There's our inflation rates. You've already seen those, I'm sure, in the news. Last year, 7%. This year, 8.5%. Things are tough all over. It's leaving a lot of good people behind. And these are genuinely good people that do their best to help their communities. We've had medical insurance cutbacks that we've been dealing with at the library. We do our best to accommodate, we've been seeing, as you know, double-digit increases year over year. And we accommodate those as best we can. But we've whittled away at the cushion that we have for changes to take place. And if somebody wants to add a person or change their plan, we're about the limit of what we can do. So. And then there's Friendsville, which, you know, we've doubled the size of the building in it, minimal cost, you know? But we do have to accommodate a rent increase and added utility payments. So. And things are picking up. That's another issue. It's a good issue, certainly. But we've had a real ramp up in our in-person programs. Now that COVID's tapering down, hopefully. We've seen real demand for in-person activities. Again, there's Kits Miller, there's Friendsville. And we've had huge crowds for family events recently, huge crowds. We had 230 people at one point in the main library for one program, and then that same day, another 150. So the library's been comparatively quiet for the last couple of years due to COVID, but it's getting much busier. It requires a lot more program planning. We had massive events for National Library Week. Last year's Summer Reading Club, we had more participation than ever, literally. And I anticipate even more this year. Another good picture of the, the big crowd we had just a bit ago. Lot of folks, and it was a really good event. But then, of course, our future goals, you know, for Friendsville Library, we're helping to create something positive for their community. It's a potential driver for economic development, and it's closer than ever now due to the recent legislative changes that took place. Our accident library needs a new roof. We're going to have to draw from reserves on that, but we can manage that. We were doing more work in partnership with the schools and information literacy subjects, you know, helping teach kids how to access good information, reliable information, that sort of thing. And we're starting a new strategic plan ourselves this next year, so. But to wrap up, libraries are a good investment. I don't think a lot of people know how good an investment they can be. You know, every book that you check out has a dollar value to it that you saved. And for National Library Week, we turned on our receipts that tell people exactly what that number is. This is my personal checkout list. For the last four years, I've checked out almost $29,000 worth of books personally. That's nowhere near the most. The, we've seen tens of thousands of dollars regularly. And the record holder is a homeschooling parent who comes in a lot. Over the last four and a half years, she's checked out $254,000 worth of materials, almost over a quarter million dollars that was, you know, provided to her via the library. You know, again, for free for her. Every dollar in the library that's invested typically gives back $4 to the community and in services and materials and that sort of thing. And 54% of the population nationwide are library members, including 18, we currently have 18,204 active cards, which is about 62% of Garrett County's population. Now, obviously, there's some folks who are out of state, but still, that's quite a bit. That's because libraries matter. They certainly matter to people who use them, like the blind girl who last month came into the library with her caregiver. And she was so excited that we had Braille books. She was just, she was reading them, and she had the biggest grin on her face, and it was the best feeling. Or the traveling nurse who was so appreciative, she was able to come and use our computers with no card and no charge. Or an elderly patron who needed her marriage certificate from Hawaii. And she didn't have, she did not use the internet. She didn't have an email address, and all the paperwork is now online. So we had a patron, we had a staff member who helped her create an email address and walk her through the process, because that's what we do. Or the kids whose classes visit and they get to use their student cards, check out materials without having to worry about the fines down the road. The incarcerated person whose letter kicked off a new partnership with the Detention Center, you know, because they didn't have books for inmates. A patron who was widowed and credited the staff's kindness and library's resources with helping her through that transition in her life. The patrons we directly delivered books to during COVID that were homebound. That was a service that we really want to be able to restart as a permanent feature. The kids who received tutoring through our online service, got the explanations they needed to make their homework click. The students who had their tests proctored at the library and launched them into new careers. And the page, the parents who, with our support, read 1,000 books to their kids before kindergarten. And they had that achievement memorialized permanently with us. These are just a few of the stories, you know? And I could go on. There's so many more that, whose stories we don't hear, but their lives were improved by the library. And, ah, it's simple. The libraries are for everyone. They're especially for those who need help, and we're proud to serve them. And your support reverberates through the county in a very real way. So that's all I had. Thanks for your time. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Larry? Question?
I just, very good presentation and...
Well, thank you. I got one more slide there.
Amazes me how many people now are using the libraries. I think before, it wasn't happening. So I think you've increased that dramatically.
Well, we're doing our best. Well, we're doing our best, we just...
Appreciate that, too.
I appreciate it.
Very important to the community.
We just want to be as useful as possible to many people as possible, so I appreciate it.
They did a great job. Thank you, Tom. All right, that wraps up all the budget hearings. Like I said, the main budget presentation will be our next meeting, which is May the 17th, here, starting at 4:30. So with that, thank you all very much for coming out.
Thank you, good job.
See you all next time.